All right, good morning. It is 9:00 AM on October 30th, 2019. If you would please rise. Join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome this huge crowd we have here this morning. Please hold the applause. Do I have any amendments to the agenda? Council Huddle.
Mr. Chair, for executive session, I would like to add 6D for labor negotiations. I received a communication from the mediator that I'd like to share with the board.
Okay. Anything else?
None here, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion, please.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second, further discussion? Ready, JJ?
Yes.
Roll, please. Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. All right, next is presentations. We have a presentation on our water master coverage for Curry County. Jake Johnstone is here from Southwest Regional Oregon Water Resources Department. Mr. Johnstone.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Pash. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing this opportunity. Thank you, Director Schmelzer, for getting me on the agenda here. I'll just briefly introduce myself for the record. Jake Johnstone. I am the Southwest Region Manager for the Oregon Water Resource Department. I am based out of the Medford office, covering the Southwest Region, which is Jackson, Josephine, Coos, Curry, and Douglas Counties. As many of you know, we have experienced a restructuring with the Oregon Water Resource Department. I'd like to explain a little back history on that, a little story of how that came about. And then I'd like to go into the coverage that we'll be providing moving forward in the future and then answer any questions you may have relating to that. In 2016, the Oregon Secretary of State did an audit on the Oregon Water Resource Department to look at the agency as a whole, look at places where we could make system improvements, different avenues we could utilize to try and increase efficiency in managing the state's water resources. So for us in Oregon Water Resource Department, we're charged with the public benefit of surface and groundwater. Some of the suggestions that came out of that were requesting more staffing from the legislative session to meet growing needs of field services divisions in different areas around the state. And other suggestions came out regarding auditing workloads in different districts around the state. Just as a brief explanation, you'll hear me refer to districts. A lot of district lines around the state were carved up along county lines. So there's the term Josephine County Water Master, which is really District 14. So just to clarify, that's a state-held position, not a county-funded position. So the district analytics came back. We looked at it. We've asked for, the department has requested, in our agency-requested budget, packages that would supply more field staff to our field offices to meet growing work needs where they're needed. That did not come up out. So one of the other suggestions was to, following the audit of workload, find ways where we could shift staff to meet the needs. The Willamette Valley, as you well know, is a growing population density. It has growing water concerns and water issues for water management. The District 16, which was one of the largest in water right numbers, almost double what the average district has in water rights, was requiring more workload than the water master there could feasibly get to. So there has also been a reclassification of the Willamette storage projects. There are a little over a dozen reservoirs in the Willamette Basin managed between the state and federal partners. So along that workload, in order to get ahead of it, the decision was made to shift the position authority for a coastal water master, District 19, up to the Willamette Valley, carving that district, which was 16, in two, creating a new district to the west of the river there to help with that workload. So that more closely aligns the workload for those two new districts, the one that's been subdivided and then the other new one. There's also some movements of district lines you'll see on the maps. I apologize, the lines are blue, which can be somewhat hard to follow, but you can see there's a thicker blue line for the newer lines, the newer boundaries, and a thinner blue line for the older boundaries. So these new districts are more closely aligned with evenly distributing the amount of water rights, points of diversion, residents, that kind of thing. So what does that mean moving forward for the coast, for the South Coast? So we have the Josephine County Water Master or District 14 Water Master, which is out of the Grants Pass office. This is Scott Sicilini. I clipped his business card to the top corner of the map there for you. He is out of the Grants Pass office. He currently provides coverage for Josephine County. For what he will be absorbing will be your county. Curry County will be part of District 14. The boundary line, as we've put it on this map, and please consider the, you know, the draft note on the top of this map here. But the way we've divided it right now is along the county lines for ease of use in moving forward. So he would be covering Josephine and Curry County out of the Grants Pass. The Douglas County Water Master, Umpqua Basin Water Master, District 15, out of Roseburg, will be absorbing Coos County. So part of this reorganization that we've done for field services is not specific to just the District 19 Water Master. There are a handful of other positions that are involved in this. We've moved around some district boundaries around the state. We've shifted some position responsibilities. And we've had to find purchase or find staffing savings in order to create more support for the Southwest Region to help with this reallocation of workload. What that means for the South Coast is that we have a new regional assistant water master. And the assistant water master is like our Swiss Army knife in our field services division. That individual can do all the different tasks and is not beholden to district boundaries. That individual can work wherever is needed in the region. So there will be a new regional assistant water master, which I will be posting out of the Grants Pass office. So that office goes from one staff to two staff, a water master and a regional assistant. That regional assistant will shift over to help cover the coast workload as necessary in Coos and Curry County. I will also be bringing online another full-time regional assistant water master out of the Medford office. And that one, the Medford office being the regional office where we have the most resources, that one will also serve to assist with Douglas, Josephine, Coos, Curry, and Jackson County coverage. Any questions?
Well, I have one immediate question. I was kind of wondering, as the Willamette Valley continues to grow, and actually down into Grants Pass-Medford area, that area is growing as well. I'm just wondering, where are you drawing their water resources for that growth from? I've been told that some of the water resources for the Medford area are coming from the Rogue River. And I'm wondering if there's truth to that.
Yeah, so the Medford Water Commission has a really interesting water supply system. They get their water out of Big Butte Springs area, that watershed up there. And then they also get water out of the Rogue River. They primarily get their water out of Big Butte watershed, which accounts for some of the cleanest municipal water in the country. They supplement it with Rogue River water as necessary at certain times of the summer, so.
But my concern with that is, as you may or may not know, is the Rogue River, with the fish issues that we're having, the temperatures in the river have risen. The water level has dropped. We've got a lot of gravel in the river now that's worked its way down since the removal of a couple of dams. And of course, we're losing our spawning grounds because of temperatures, water temperatures, algae blooms, those kind of things that are happening in the river now. So that continued draw-off of the river for the continued growth in the Medford area is having an effect farther downriver. And it's just something that I'd like, you know, maybe to have people constantly thinking about as that area grows, where they draw the water from and the consequences that'll have for other counties like Curry County.
Sure, sure. Yeah, and it's a very valid point and it's a good consideration when we talk about water management. One of the reasons, you know, and I apologize for not having gotten out here earlier. I know that we tried to schedule and then there were a bunch of storms. And that's on me for not making it out here earlier than that. I understand what it's like to live in a rural county. I'm from Josephine County. I have that dubious honor, so.
We won't hold that against you.
You know, that's what they set up north, too.
Why is it dubious?
But, you know, one of the things that I want to do is offer to you an avenue to talk about water resources. If there are considerations you have, like the, you know, consumptive use of the Bear Creek area, the Medford area, please reach out to me. Another thing to consider is right now, the Governor's Office with National Resource Management has a 100-year water vision project that they're working on. There are some public meetings being held. There's one on November 7th in Medford. And this isn't an agency-staffed meeting. It is an opportunity for folks like yourself, stakeholders. So that could be environmental groups to resource groups to municipalities. It's an opportunity, folks, to come talk about what they envision being future needs and future concerns. And then those notes will be given up to the Director's Office and also over to the Governor's Office as they try and formulate a 100-year water vision. So those are really valid concerns and those are things we want to be attentive to. The Rogue River is blessed with having that Lost Creek Reservoir, that Bureau project, so we do get some regular flows.
Could you repeat the date and time and place of that regional meeting you were talking about?
Can, I'm going to make a note here to follow up with Julie or with the board here regarding the time. And I don't believe that the facility has been established, but it's Medford, November 7th.
Okay. It's pretty quick. It's coming up. It's a week from today.
Yeah, I think they were trying to figure out in schedule, as you can well imagine with very important schedules, about a dozen of these around the state, so I apologize for the short notice.
It's okay. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, getting over here is no small thing. We appreciate that very much. And yes, we've been hearing from some of our citizens, especially in North County, you know, how this might affect them. I think about a month ago, I handed out to the Commissioners a two-page document on the 100-year water vision that recently come out, as you know, from Oregon Water Resources Department. And we spent some time with Mr. Pryor and trying to understand, you know, it seems to be this magical number 16 is the number of water masters that Oregon can justify expense. And so I think our North County people, Mr. Johnstone, were really concerned with the distance and how well the different districts will work together. And so that's a little bit of an issue, of course, the travel time and just the overall highlighted demand for water in Oregon and this 100-year vision. So I'm really, we've been really encouraging people to take a serious look at that and understand what it could mean, what the consequences, good and potentially bad, could be for, you bet, our citizens. So one more comment or a question for you. Did you say Klamath County or just Jackson, Josephine, Curry? Five counties?
Five counties, Commissioner Boyce. I do not have Klamath County as part of my jurisdiction.
That's a tough one, isn't it?
It is. We do assist, as state staff, we do assist with regulation in the Klamath as needed out of the Medford office, but that is not a primary responsibility for the Southwest Region.
Well, thank you again for coming over here. And I get the sense you're going to be accessible. And that's an expectation for our citizens and I think it's very important. And again, you getting here on short notice and getting on the agenda, thank you, Director Schmelzer. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Director?
Jake, I just wanted to say I think your timing is impeccable. We just received an email yesterday from Susan Morgan from the Association of Oregon Counties relaying this map to us and talking about it. So I'm glad to see you got over here right away. That was great. I know a lot of people are concerned about the loss of a water master, but I'm not sure if everyone understands the services they can get online that they no longer need an in-person person there for. And I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit about the services that are available to people online, in particular Realtors or landowners that are looking to research their water rights or find out what's involved on these programs.
Sure, and thank you, Director Schmelzer, for that question. I want to touch on something real quick that I forgot to highlight in the beginning, in the opening. This reorganization goes into effect in January, so that until the end of the year, there will be no change in service. District 19 Water Master will still be in his office and available to the public as per the usual. Along that thread, one of the things that we've noticed is a rapid decline in front-counter traffic. And one of the reasons that we believe that is, is a combination of us continuing to update the technology we have available online. So online and in public record format, you can get water rights informations for properties. You can get well log information. You can get all the forms for different water right applications. And that has mitigated a lot of our front-counter traffic. We also, water masters, take it upon themselves, as workload allows, to schedule meetings with Realtor groups. So when I was Josephine County Water Master, I did a handful of Realtor classes where I'd taken a bunch of Realtors from the community and teach them how to research water rights. Now, that's not going to mitigate every water right research. There's some complicated ones out there. But it can really help with their workload as they go to list properties. The Commissioners in Coos County express some concern regarding access to records, that kind of thing. They also express some concern regarding training opportunities for public who would be interested in further understanding the water rights process, how to utilize the website, that kind of thing. I think that's a valid concern and both a great opportunity for us to educate the public. We have a pretty widely-used Water Rights 101 that we can cram into 30 minutes or an hour. Or when I did it with Realtors, it was three hours. An hour and a half of this is what we do, and then an hour and a half of now everyone get out your laptop. So that is something we could, you know, find a time to offer down here on the South Coast. And we could find a facility that has Wi-Fi and do something along those lines to really maximize the exposure to the website. One of the things that I want to point towards that has been a goal of mine since assuming this post as Region Manager was to coordinate with your facility and you folks on having a location, a desk, whatever the case may be, whatever's available, where our water master or regional assistant or myself can come and schedule office hours. So that would be allowing the folks of Curry County a scheduled opportunity to come in and have face-to-face time with the Water Resource Department personnel. You know, the future of how we manage this very valuable water resource, there will be more consumptive use, as Chair Pash was pointing out. And we are attempting to move our resources in a manner by which we can really do a good job of giving the public resources. But it's also less of the one water master whose only responsibility is that district and more of us working as a team to cover the needs. So along that thread, the way I envision this would be, you know, you'll have Scott Sicilini, who's the District 14 Water Master. You'll have him as a resource. You have the regional office as a resource, where myself and other regional assistant water masters and the District 13 Water Master are housed. And I've had every job but one in the region. I have not been a well inspector, but I've been a hydrologic technician, a regional assistant water master, a water master, and now Region Manager. So I'm a multi-tool as well. And I'm not opposed to coming out here and, you know, spending a couple of days with office coverage as well. So we understand that this will be difficult for some of your constituents. And I do apologize for that. And hard decisions were made. And I also know that hard decisions are made in the legislative session. And I do not envy the position of having to figure out which agencies and departments in the state of Oregon get budgeting or get additional funding. That is a very difficult task. So this is how we're going to accommodate the workload.
Commissioner Boyce?
Two quick questions, if I may, or clarifications. You mentioned routinely coming here and standing up in office so people could schedule in to see you. Did I understand that right?
That's what we would hope to do. Now.
Down the road?
Correct. What we want to do in the next few months, Commissioner, is get a good idea of what we're looking at for foot traffic and workload and try and accommodate the needs as that comes up.
Well, that sounds like good news to me. The second clarification needed there. We're part of, Curry County is part of the District 14, Josephine County. Porford Langos people, they have two and a half hours to get to Roseburg or they would have three hours or more to get to Grants Pass, normal travel conditions. No prohibition or concerns that those North County folks couldn't go to your water master in your region, Douglas County, Roseburg?
Yeah, there's no hard line saying no to that. And going through the resources that are in the District 19 office, looking at, for example, the files, the old water rights files, that boundary is going to be a little flexible on the needs to meet the constituents. Generally, as you know, counties are historically split a lot along geographical lines. Well, that's also how we generally would carve up water master districts based off of drainages. So for this draft map and for where it stands right now and for ease of consistency moving forward, it's along the county lines. But as I said before, we want to be a regional resource. So if there's a convenience, if someone's going to Roseburg anyway to do their shopping or whatever the case may be, it's not unheard of that they'd be able to talk to Douglas County Water Master or, sorry, the District 15 Water Master.
You just brought up another topic, water runoff. And I have had someone come to me and ask me about the wetlands. Does your office also handle what's determined to be wetlands and what's not?
We do not.
Okay.
That would be Department of State lands.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure on that. All right.
I might wish it was that way, but we're under that category.
Southwest Region, correct. 13, 14, 15 are the Southwest Region districts.
You got to adjust that microphone.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. First of all, I just want to say that.
You're Becky Crockett?
Yes, that's my name, Becky Crockett. Greg Whacker, our water master, has done an awesome job. We send referrals to him every day, sometimes two, three, four referrals every day. I get comments back that people have tried to leave messages, but his phone log is so full that they can't leave a message. And I just tell him, try again. We're extremely concerned about what's going to happen here in regards to the public. In order for them to submit an application, they have to have confirmation on water rights or confirmation that they have a well. Some of that information, yes, can be obtained online. The dilemma, though, is a lot of these water right issues are very complicated. Somebody may think that they have access to water, but they don't really know until they talk to the water master and figure out what's going on as far as the history of that water source. So this creates quite a burden for the county and it will slow down the ability of people to submit their applications. So it's just a little bit inconsistent with the desire to move quickly through the development process and get people their permits. This will, I believe, significantly stall our ability to provide that service to the public. There was mention of a regional assistant water master in Grants Pass. I was excited when I heard that mention. However, I also heard that that person would serve both Coos and Curry County. I would just suggest that it might be good to allocate that person at least to Curry County for all of the requests that your agency historically has gotten in regards to questions on water rights. So I really appreciate the opportunity for you to come and tell us what's going to happen. But I would like to make sure that it's clear that this will slow down the development process.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyce?
I think there's going to be work in the, even hopefully in the short session, to increase that number of 16. There's a lot of talk about that because it's so common in rural areas. Obviously, as you know, not just Curry County, but it is a very valid concern that they're just going to be spread thinner and thinner. And that's a huge concern. Yes, thanks.
Thanks. Okay. Anything else?
Josh, I will work on a 101 for the public along with the Realtors. And we'll try and schedule it for January or February and have you and your staff back to meet everybody and hopefully help with a smooth transition.
Okay. And one thing we're going to be doing is we're going to be crafting up a press release and then sending that out to the relevant news organizations to notify folks prior to the beginning of the year, giving people some notice on who they can contact and where they can get resources.
Commissioner Gold?
With our inability to contact the road master right now, it sounds like people are having a hard time.
Water master.
Water master, what did I say?
Road master.
Oh, I've got roads on the brain. Anyway, would it be possible for you to set up some sort of maybe bi-weekly schedule or something to come to Curry County so that people, you could be available? The water master could be available to the folks that need that help?
Yeah, that's our intent with Coos County was to start with maybe a bi-weekly schedule and then go from there based off of workload needs. That would be something we could coordinate in Curry County with cooperation from the county here of finding a desk or a location that the constituents could have the knowledge that this same location will be accessible on those dates. I also want to point out that I know that there's drive time included. But if there are time-sensitive complaints or issues that come up, it is something that we want to be responsive to. It is something that we would find one of our resources to come out to. And I also want to, again, reiterate that we're a region and as a region, we're a team. And therefore, it's not just the Grants Pass Water Master who would have to come over and meet the needs over here. It would be one of two regional assistants or myself. And I don't like to sit behind a desk all the time, so I like to get out in the field.
And I think another thing that would be very helpful for citizens, especially that are filing for permits and that, is to have someone to talk to to answer those questions that when they actually dial the number, somebody answers that phone. Because that's what I've heard a lot of, is all you get is a message that says, "I'm sorry, but this person's voicemail box is full." Click.
Sure.
And they've got those questions that they want to have answered. So to have a number that they can actually call and get those questions answered might save someone a trip here, you know?
That's a really good point. And I would point out that our regional office, 541-774-6880, has a staffed 40-hour-a-week office administrator. And her name is Kristy Haynes, and she's very competent in answering basic water right questions, water right queries, that kind of thing. And then 503-986-0900 is the Salem main number. I advise all my water masters and generally field staff want to do this, that in our voicemail, we say, "You've reached so-and-so. If you have a pressing issue and you can't get ahold of me, please contact the region or the Salem office."
That's great. All right, I think that's all we have. Thank you for coming out. We appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Look forward to seeing you again.
Yep, thank you.
All right, next up, we have number four, announcement. North County Budget Committee vacancy due to resignation with term expiring on December 34th of 2019. Ms. Schmelzer?
Yes, Ken Duquet, who was on our budget committee, has resigned. And so we need to find a replacement for him. We need to advertise that position. It would be somebody from his district, the North District. And because we have a budget committee meeting coming up on November 12th, we'd like to get going on this as soon as possible to get the word out that we're looking for someone.
Yeah, maybe we can even get, he just stepped out, but maybe we can get our newspapers to put something in the paper that we need someone from North County to get back on the budget committee so that they have a voice in our budget.
Correct. So if the board's okay with that, we'll move ahead with advertising and looking for that person.
Certainly. Certainly, absolutely. All right, next we have public comments. Hearing that? Closed?
Mr. Chair, could I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Could, thank you. You were part of this as well. With the Brookings Head Start project, we received invoice from Brookings for some water hookup and SDC fees to the tune of close to $11,000. And we sent a written request to the City Council of Brookings to waive that, to contribute it to the project. I went down to the meeting as well as some representatives from Brookings Head Start on Monday. Brookings City Council reminded us that historically, they haven't waived SDCs for hospitals or schools. But nevertheless, we got a partial grant from them for $3,100 towards the project, which we are grateful for. So just for the record, I'd just like to send a notice of appreciation to the Brookings City Council for their contribution to the project.
Thanks for your work on that. We appreciate it. Good work.
So I have a question regarding that. Is the county going to be responsible for the rest of the remaining charges or is?
Well, see, that's what I think helped us get them to contribute. Because I think if it were just the county, they would not have been that sympathetic. But if you remember, under the agreement, we have an agreement with the group Orca, who's running the Brookings Head Start, and they're not-for-profit. Anything that is not covered by the grant, they have to cover. That's why they came up with that $58,000 for the foundation work and they came up with the $30,000 for the architect. So when some of the questions from the Brookings City Council were, you know, the county's kind of got some nerve asking us for money. And we had to remind them that really, when we value-engineered the project, components came out from the end result, which will be Orca's. And so we just reminded them, it's really not benefiting the county. It's benefiting the Orca and their project. the Orca and their project, so.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, so next we have the consent agenda. I'm sorry, Commissioner Boyce?
Which counselor said we had the nerve? No, I'm kidding.
That's okay. It's probably on a recording somewhere. I was paraphrasing. They didn't really say we have a lot of nerve, but it was...
Appreciate that.
It was just kind of a vibe I picked up. And again, it may just be my impression and I could be wrong, but they, I think if it were just us asking, we might not have, you know, it might not have been successful.
I'm cycling through all the...
Oh, that's okay. I don't want to, I don't want to start anything if it mean to.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. Board approval for the Dyer Partnership Task Order 10A. $156,390 to move forward with 30% engineering for $2.14 million. Moral Bridge Project, per Agreement 33365 from the Road Department.
That we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second Chair Pash, further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, at this time, we are going to enter into executive session per ORS 1926602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection, ORS 1926602H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed, ORS 1926602A to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. And Council, how do you mention one other?
Thank you. I believe it's D, which is to confer with designated representatives in labor negotiations.
All right, so at this time, we're going to recess this meeting and enter executive session. This meeting is in recess.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs and it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire, so we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the National Forest down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm going to be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's going to benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms and it just gained traction and people loved it.
Langley's is less than 500 people. It's very small. So we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my day job and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're going to send people now and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know anybody else's, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan and we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area, so we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang last two years and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have and it's a balance. We're going to promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have and don't try to be something that you're not. It's going to be hard, it's going to take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an All-American Road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is and what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official state Maritime Museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque, small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? Ten miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds in offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But while cautiously, these organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The Central Coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns and as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your All-American Road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Falweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition burned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mists kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for... Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront feel, with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays. And don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
Now, all four of our otters were rescued otters? They were found out in the wild?
For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yahots. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yahots is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff, and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hacita Head Lighthouse to the sea lion caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rododendrons along the roadside. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayuslaw River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed Sport is at the center of the Oregon Dunes. But you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed Sport hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayuslaw River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston to Bandon tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Bandon. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The Wild Coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States, and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this All-American Road home. Small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Nea County Mountain, you can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There is little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shining stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves and the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So, you've toured nature's finest art museum. You've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria. Ride a horse along the waves near Florence. Pet a baby tiger near Bandon. Hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature, and you don't have huge numbers of people, but you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
Wildfire, as everyone knows, has emerged as one of the big, major issues affecting Oregon, and for that matter, all Western states. A real actionable response that's including how do we fight fire, actively managing our forest so that we don't have the fuels out there? And how are we going to protect communities from smoke exposures? The council's really set up to have a comprehensive strategy that's based on action and based on protecting our communities.
The primary focus we, as a board, have come through with is that in researching the policies for fire management, yes, prescribed fire has its place on the landscape, but not during fire season. We, as a county, passed a proclamation that says, "Once the state fire marshal declares fire season, it'll be nothing but full suppression." And recently took a resolution to the National Association of Counties, essentially says that they support coordination between agencies and local governments for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens regarding fire. Prescribed fire, fire season, anything that affects our citizens.
This is Lily Morgan from Josephine County, and we are at the Rogue Leadership Forum today, looking at the best possible partnerships that we can come up with to fight the fire issues and the smoke issues that we're facing in southwest Oregon. So looking forward to coming up with solutions and the partnerships to get the job done so we don't face what we have the last few years with catastrophic fires and smoke that invades our communities for months to come. So this is a good opportunity, and we hope to be successful in the outcome.
Seeing so many people come together has really been exciting for me, because there's a lot of expertise, there's a lot of resources, and as we attempt to do a shared stewardship approach to keeping people safe, it's really important that we get together. So my name is Murph George Jr., and I'm the Forest Supervisor for the Rogue River Siski National Forest. The first thing is making sure to get fires out if they're threatening life and property. The second thing that I'm going to focus in on is when it's safe to do so, to put some fire on the landscape when it's cooler and not during fire season, to reduce these same fuels that are giving us so much fits during the fire season.
Bob Horton, I'm the Fire Chief of Jackson County Fire District 3 in southern Oregon. The challenges that are facing us in terms of the mega fires and the wildfires that we've been experiencing out in this valley, particularly in the last couple of years, but across the state and across the region, incredibly concerning to us and the fire community, those in our communities in general, our constituents and our patrons are extremely concerned as they ought to be. Really, the takeaway from the work that's being done now is this is an extraordinary collaboration of dozens on dozens of interested stakeholder groups who are coming together with a common purpose. It's really an inspiring showing of humanity to not only be able to provide for a greater quality of life for our people, but to be strong stewards of our land so that our future for us and generations to come is incredibly bright.
Very pressing issue. It's bearing down on us. Fire season is approaching, and I am really interested in preventing my home and other homes in my community from being impacted by wildfires specifically from being burnt down. That's my main reason for being involved.
Quite a collaboration of folks. We're here looking for practical solutions to help us unravel some of the issues surrounding wildfires today here in the state of Oregon. And my focus really is on planning for large wildfire events in advance of their occurrence. That way, when they do occur, we can respond more appropriately to those situations.
Well, I just think it's grand if all of the people all over the state have come together today to be concerned about water. It just warms my heart, because I know that they really will leave here today feeling more impressed about the water, because I have told them that we're all born in water. We cannot live without it. It's our job to take care of it, stop the garbage in the rivers and streams and oceans, because there's life in that water, and it's our job to keep it clean for them. Because we cannot live on this planet without the animal kingdom. I was in Ohio, at the Ohio River, with Dr. Emoto, the Japanese scientist who had proven water could heal. He and I stood on the riverbank, brushing the Ohio River that they had us come to do. And I prayed that God has still kept the river good for them over there. We were taught from Berlin that prayer works. You too, remember your prayers, because they work. It has nothing to do with religion or church.
Roadway departure fatalities are a serious and often preventable problem in the United States. The Federal Highway Administration reports that 54% of all highway fatalities are caused by drivers leaving their lane of travel. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking a proactive approach to reduce this kind of tragedy by implementing a centerline and shoulder rumble strip program.
Rumble strips are one of the most low-cost, cost-effective countermeasures that we can apply across the system.
Rumble strips are grooved patterns on the roadway that make a rumbling sound and a physical vibration, immediately warning inattentive drivers that they're leaving their driving lane. Rumble strips allow drivers to self-correct and avoid an accident.
About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are a vehicle can leave the lane to the right and hit a ditch or a rock or a tree, something like that, or cross over the centerline to the left and get in a head-on collision or a sideswipe meeting type crash.
Over an eight-year period, ODOT engineers studied segments of 16 different highways and concluded that rumble strips are highly effective at reducing lane departures.
We did a before and after crash analysis to find that we have reduced head-on fatalities by 40% with the installation of centerline rumble strips.
We've been trying to find a way to deal with a problem that seems to be increasing over the last 10 or 15 years with our drivers, and that's distracted driving. And there's a lot of things that cause distracted driving. All these distractions are things that make people take their attention away from where it should be.
Comparisons between other available safety features like guardrail and concrete barriers show that shoulder and centerline rumble strips are the most cost-effective safety treatment available.
We're finding that those are very effective in trying to make sure that when you do make that mistake, it's not the last mistake you make. They help bring your attention back to the driving task and bring you back to where you should be, focusing on being in the middle of your lane and being safe.
ODOT makes a conscious effort to use a bike-friendly rumble strip design where possible and installs 12-foot bike gaps every 48 feet of rumble strip. ODOT understands that rumble strips create a noise that can be disruptive for people who live near rural highways, and we're trying to address these concerns with different approaches.
For the noise, we're looking at some new designs. We're hoping that the new design rumble strip will be just as effective at saving people from making an error, and much quieter, on the order of 10 times as quiet. And we are actually going to be installing our first full set of these style of rumble strips along 205 this summer.
So we recognize that noise is a concern, but one of the things I like to tell people is whenever you hear the sound of a rumble strip, it could be the sound of the life being saved of one of your loved ones.
Rumble strips are proven to save lives. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking the lead in implementing the Sound of Safety.
Well, we're here with Commissioner Colleen Roberts for the monthly meeting of the ONC Board, which Colleen sits on. Colleen, why don't you tell our audience a little bit about your mission and what you guys discuss at these monthly meetings?
Sure. Our ONC Board is of the 18 counties in Oregon that have the ONC lands on their BLM, federal lands. And we discuss everything about these lands. The ONC Act of 1937 is our primary focus, how the decisions that these lands get managed, do they match up with the congressional mandate of the ONC Act? And how we can better educate and help administer the care of these lands for the health and safety and welfare of the citizens that we represent.
I would imagine you discuss things like how many board feet can be taken out of the forest in different areas? Are these things that come up each month?
Yes. Well, harvest timber management is a big part of our conversation, as is lately the fire issues.
We're here today with Commissioner Dan DeYoung of Josephine County. Dan, you have an important role on the ONC lands board. And we're here in beautiful Gold Beach, Oregon, discussing the monthly matters of ONC. What was your main focus at this meeting?
Today, we had a really good sit-down with two representatives for the BLM. And there's constantly, we work with BLM, because actually, the ONC lands are on BLM lands, and that's our concern. Mainly, the ONC Board of Directors, which is a membership from all 18 counties. We always meet, I think it's bi-monthly, and then we have an annual meeting. And it's basically to discuss what the sign says, Forest Health, Jobs, and County Services, that the money coming from the sale of timber on ONC lands goes through the federal government. They take their share out of it and then return it back to the counties to be used for basically jobs, county services, a lot of county services, such as law enforcement, schools. There's just an awful lot of things that these individual counties can use the money for. But it's from the sale of timber on the ONC lands. ONC lands goes way back to 1937. ONC lands goes way back to 1937 with the 1937 ONC Congressional Act and the ONC Act of 1937. We're just trying to get back to the actual verbiage and the language that's in that act. It's surprising to us how we can ignore a congressional act. That remains to be answered by the federal government, but that's what we want to get back to.
Hi there. I'm Tillamook County Commissioner Dave Yamamoto, and I'm a member of the ONC Board and also the Chair of the Council of Forest Trust Land Counties. And in Tillamook County, it's very important that we consider natural resource-based economies. So, in Tillamook County, we have lots of dairy. I'm sure you're familiar with Tillamook Creamery, but also lots of state and federal timber lands. When it comes to federal timber lands in particular, everyone thinks that we're looking at timber revenue, and that's very important. But one side of the coin that people don't consider are the family wage jobs that come with all timber. It's not just the timber receipts that we get. These are family wage jobs. These are fully benefited jobs. Whereas on the tourism side, the income is about a third of what we would consider a family wage job, and there are also no benefits with those. So, timber receipts are very important, but it's the family wage jobs that they create at the same time, which are very important to counties like Tillamook.
Perfect. Keeping it real for families in Tillamook County.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yamamoto.
Thank you very much.
All right. We are here with County Commissioner Bob Main from Coors County, Oregon, and we've had the monthly meeting of ONC lands here. And Mr. Main, Commissioner Main, I should say, tell us what your role is, Bob, on the ONC lands board.
I am the Vice President of the ONC Association of Oregon County Counties.
Okay.
Consists of 18 ONC counties, western-oriented counties.
Okay.
And we make sure that the counties receive their payments from those ONC lands that Congress designated for the sole purpose of those 18 ONC counties. For no other reason, Congress decided that when they took back the lands and took them off the tax roll, that the counties should benefit from the harvest of those lands. Without that, the tax rates, like in my county, would be two to three times higher.
Oh, okay. So, you help keep the tax rates down in your county by utilizing the full function of this congressional act?
Absolutely.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
We are here with Oregon Curry County Commissioner Court Boyce. Thank you so much for taking a moment to speak with us.
Well, thank you. With the natural resource base that this state has, I've spent, or spending better than half of my time as County Commissioner on those issues, fire management, public lands management, certainly natural resources, all of those. And so, I'm often reminded that 250 years ago, the generations that came before us when they got here to Oregon, include Northern California, they found the greatest forest in all of North America, that produced the greatest watersheds, that produced the most pristine rivers, that give us the highest quality of salmonella that runs arguably on the planet.
A sign that doesn't have a rider on it, so we take our first test at this motion speed limit of...
Bob Weeks and Harley Bills are seeing more than their share of curvy roads these days. Their job is to drive every stretch of highway in Region 1 several times.
The old limits were set back in the 1930s and 40s and were changed very little until just recently. So, now our limits are taking into account newer vehicles, a little bit more aggressive driving style, and so those limits are going up.
And going up in a big way. This is Eric Leeming, a traffic devices engineer with ODOT. He's driving an ordinary car with some extraordinary tech onboard, a GPS device that records data as he maneuvers every curve in the road. Back at his office, Eric can upload the data recorded in the car and special software determines exactly the right speed for every curve every time. Most speeds will increase by five to 10 miles per hour, but in some special cases, it's much higher.
The state has a deadline of 2019 from the Federal Highway Administration, but with 8,000 miles of roads to investigate and potentially thousands of signs to change, they're not wasting any time. They're getting out there right now.
Now, we're going to the W113.
About 800 signs along this section.
That's a lot of signs.
It's a lot of signs. If it's a 35 mile an hour corner, you should be taking it at 35 miles an hour.
America's 3,069 county governments provide fundamental services for building healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. We are an intergovernmental partner, implementing federal and state policies at the local level, often under strict rules and funding constraints. County governments, through the National Association of Counties, engage federal policymakers on a range of issues like transportation, infrastructure, healthcare, public safety, and public lands management. All of these issues are vital to our nation's quality of life and our long-term prosperity. Decisions made by the White House, Congress, and federal courts have a major cascading impact on our ability to lead our communities and pursue a better future. Let's look at why federal policies matter to county government and why county government matters to America. Counties provide vital services that keep our communities thriving and secure. We own and maintain 45% of roads and four out of 10 bridges. We own more than a third of the airports and hundreds of hospitals and thousands of courthouses, jails, 911 call centers, and libraries. We play a critical role during emergencies like hurricanes, floods, and snowstorms. What if you called 911 and no one answered? What if you couldn't reach your medical facility because roads and bridges were in disrepair or never built? County governments are an indispensable part of the infrastructure and services that keep residents safe and connected. But with very limited revenue options under most state constitutions and laws, counties must make every penny count in order to fulfill federal and state mandates and required responsibilities. Nothing is more basic in our society than essential public facilities like schools, hospitals, airports, jails, bridges, and other infrastructure. Yet proposals have surfaced to eliminate or scale back tax-exempt municipal bonds. For over a century, municipal bonds have been the lifeblood for our nation's public infrastructure, helping finance more than $3.7 trillion in essential projects. If tax-exempt municipal bonds were eliminated or scaled back, county governments and our residents would face billions in new costs when financing vital facilities. Additionally, counties rely on MAP-21 and the Federal Highway Trust Fund to complement local transportation financing resources. With growing demands and mounting costs, we need a reliable federal partner to invest with us in our nation's economic growth and competitiveness. We need a long-term legislative solution with increased funding to ensure continued success in operating our nation's transportation system. Counties face further revenue losses each year because billions of dollars in e-commerce sales tax revenue isn't collected. The Marketplace Fairness Act would enable states and localities to collect existing already owed taxes. It would also level the playing field between many internet retailers who don't collect sales taxes and Main Street businesses that do. County governments provide support services to federal public lands, touching 700 million annual visitors. We lead search and rescue operations, fight fires, protect the public's health, and maintain roads. Federal lands cover nearly one-third of the U.S. and impact 69% of counties. Because federal land is exempt from local property taxes, counties depend on PILT, the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Program, to provide essential services. The Secure Rural Schools Program provides assistance to rural counties and school districts affected by the decline in revenue from timber harvests on federal land. Decisions to cut or delay funding both programs undermine our ability to provide services and maintain public lands. Our intergovernmental partnerships don't end with legislation because counties also implement and comply with federal and state regulations. When considering environmental protections, we know our communities and care deeply about the environment. We need a stronger voice in shaping commonsense regulations that protect communities while also promoting economic growth. This is why NACO secured significant improvements to FEMA's flood insurance program and is pushing back on the waters of the U.S.-proposed rule. Our message: Federal policies matter to county government, and county government matters to America. Every level of government must work together to shape policies that improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whether it's building and maintaining infrastructure, providing essential services, or fostering economic growth, counties are on the front line serving their citizens. NACO stands ready to work with the administration and Congress to make our nation's communities healthier, safer, and more vibrant places to live and work.
Counties matter. Counties serve nearly every American every day. Urban, suburban, and rural, counties work with states, the federal government, and other public and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. Whether you're commuting to work or shipping goods around the globe, counties matter. Counties own and maintain 45% of the nation's roads and four out of 10 bridges. And we're involved in nearly a third of public airports and transit systems. Counties matter when Americans need us the most. Counties matter because we support smart, fair, and effective criminal justice systems. We help fund police and sheriff's departments. We own and operate local jails, 911 call centers, and mental health facilities. Counties create healthy communities. We invest more than $80 billion in hospitals and medical services each year. Counties matter because we invest in the lives of residents of all ages, improving their quality of life where they live and work. Counties are the building blocks of state, regional, and national economies. We support housing, recreation, and economic development, and we do so much more. From issuing birth certificates to administering elections, counties employ more than 3.5 million people. In total, we invest more than half a trillion dollars in our residents and our communities every year. Counties provide essential services we all depend on every day. That's why counties matter. Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So, do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities, and the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways, keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Yeah, I just picked her up. We should be there in 20 minutes.
Who is it? Oh, it's him. Where is he?
I know. Yeah, I know.
When a large forest fire breaks out, potentially threatening lives, homes, wildlife, and thousands of acres of forest land, the news coverage is immediate and consistent. Interviews with homeowners, firefighters, medical aid providers, and others continues nonstop until the fire is sufficiently contained. At that point, the cameras are turned off, the interviews are over, and it's on to the next event. The images of catastrophic wildfire with its ferocity and devastating impact on the... The images of catastrophic wildfire with its ferocity and devastating impact on the land hold the interest and attention of the public. However, there is an equally important story occurring on that same landscape after the fire is contained, mopped up, and finally declared out that the public seldom sees. The frequency and size of these megafires on federal forest land has increased significantly over the last few decades. All too often, what is left in their wake is a vast sea of dead charred trees. Unfortunately, because of a maze of confusing and often contradictory rules and regulations, very little rehabilitation or reforestation occurs after these fires. The result of this neglect in many cases is as devastating as the fire itself. Here's why. Even in the hottest, severe fires, most of the dead trees remain standing, the wood not damaged by the fire, still suitable and valuable for lumber. But as the insects move in, within months, the dead and dying trees begin to deteriorate and decompose. Eventually, all of the economic value is lost. What is not removed will decay, add fuel to an even greater future fire threat, and in the process, release the greenhouse gases that the trees gathered and stored during the centuries they were alive. When all of the trees across the tens of thousands of acres burned in each of these megafires are left to rot, millions of tons of destructive greenhouse gases are released into the upper atmosphere. These are the same volatile organic compounds that have been identified as some of the most damaging elements we can put into our air. In contrast, trees harvested soon after the fire is out drive the economic engine that employs people, provides revenue for the critical restoration and reforestation, and can provide dollars for local government services such as schools, public safety, health and social services, libraries, and good roads. When the harvested trees are made into lumber for homes, construction, and furniture, the carbon remains in storage instead of going up into the atmosphere. Dead and dying timber becomes a magnet for insect infestation. These infestations can be so large that they do not end with the burned forest but progress into the surrounding green forest, killing even more trees, which then become even more fodder for the next fire. In absence of prompt active management and reforestation, invasive brush can dominate the landscape. That brush can retard and even prohibit the growth of the new forest and compound the fuel load for a future fire. When that fire does occur, the dense brush and dead fallen trees on the ground create a firestorm, burning hotter and even more damaging to the soil than the first fire. These damaged soils can repel water, lack the nutrients and organic matter needed by seedlings, and hinder the ability of new trees to grow. While megafires can be so devastating, not all fires are bad. When the conditions are right, fire has been used for decades as an effective way to reduce fuels on the forest floor, burn back brush and dead grass to stimulate the new growth desired by wildlife, thinning out the younger, overstocked areas of our forests and maintain the fire resiliency we seek. Controlled burning can be a powerful and useful tool, used in the right places, at the right time, by the professionals we charge with managing these forests. The desired result is to lessen the potential for the large devastating megafires we have been experiencing these past few decades. Recovery after megafires is not only possible but can greatly expedite the restoration and creation of all of the benefits of a healthy forest ecosystem. One fine example is Oregon's Tillamook State Forest. After repeated massive fires in the mid-twentieth century, state, county government, private companies, and even schoolchildren worked together to restore and replant over five-hundred square miles of burned-over landscape. As a result of those efforts, today we have prime fish and wildlife habitat for salmon, trout, elk, and owls, plus camping, hiking and biking trails, healthy growing forests that gather and store carbon, and sustainable timber harvests that supports local economies, funds schools and local governments, and supports thousands of family-wage jobs across the region. Without the vision of those state and local leaders just a few decades ago, very little, if any, of this would be possible today. Nearly every year for the past twenty years, we have watched millions of acres of our public forests burned by megafires. We spent hundreds of millions, even billions of dollars fighting them. Yet when the fire is out, a mere fraction of the killed trees and lost value is ever recovered with little or no effort to restore the burned landscape. What can you do? Contact your elected federal, state, and local officials. Tell them these federal lands and once treasured forests are too valuable to simply walk away. Future generations are depending upon you to take action. For more information, visit us on Facebook at Communities for Healthy Forests.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family-wage jobs, and it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire, so we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower forty-eight states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm gonna be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally, and I'm pleasantly surprised, it's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's gonna benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away, and so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bannon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langloes is less than five hundred people, it's very small, so we have to bring in tourists, and being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really wanna make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my, my day job and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I wanna do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're gonna send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know what anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan, and we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area, so we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that wanna come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small, and now we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Fuzz Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang the last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're gonna promote tourism, but we wanna do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way, and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bannon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have and don't try to be something that you're not. It's gonna be hard, it's gonna take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.